I'm.
Okay, let's call the meeting. All right, call the meeting to order of the planning board at four thirty-four. Present is myself, Fred Matrulie, George Mitchell.
George, yep.
Joe Caruso and Joe Priari along with Dave Harden and Chris Lawrence. Also attending is someone down here, Julian Clark. As well as councilman. So first item on the list. Let this open then. Okay, first item is case number seven dash twenty. Seven dash twenty, address is map, tax map, number three oh eight, not seventeen dash oh four dash twenty-eight. The applicant is Liberty Affordable Housing Incorporated. Owner is Liberty Affordable Housing Incorporated. Pursuant with section two dash twenty-nine dash twenty-seven, two seven four one. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for a project to be located at the aforementioned address. The applicant has proposed to construct a one thousand nine hundred and forty square foot office and community center for the Park Edge Townhouse Complex. Site improvements will include a driveway, equipment storage shed, twelve vehicle parking lot, patio, sidewalks, utility, utilities, site lighting and landscape. Ingress and egress will be located off of Park Edge Drive. Terminal assessment form has been provided by the applicant.
Um, okay.
All right, so do we have some, do we have a plan that we can see or something?
Can you see my shared screen?
No.
No.
Okay, sorry about that, let me. Get back there, how about this, can you see it now?
I can see Brian's desktop.
Yeah, we see Oak Park, Illinois. Oh, there we go.
Oh, no.
Yep.
It's better. Okay.
Julian, did you wanna?
Yes.
I'll have this, I'll have this visual up. Have a little bit more insight to what's happening with this.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right, Julian Clark with Plumlee Engineering, representing Liberty Affordable Home. I believe Randy Denton with Liberty was going to also connect, I don't know if he was able to or not. Liberty Affordable Homes is purchasing the property from the current owner.
Yep.
And they're proposing a bunch of improvements to the existing townhouses in the area. And they also want to build this new office slash community center that you see in front of you. As you already summarized, it's almost a two thousand square foot building with equipment storage, driveway parking. New service, new utility services will be extended to the existing public infrastructure. There's gonna be some sidewalks and pedestrian improvements, a patio area landscaping and lighting. We provided a lighting plan also showing that there's no off-site spillage for the lights. This is a vacant parcel just to the south of the townhouses that they're gonna incorporate this new office and community center on. After that, I guess I'll open it up to questions from you guys, or if Randy has anything he wants to add.
I don't have any questions. Chris, does the, does the engineering department or the planning department have any input to this?
Uh, yeah, the, the engineering department reviewed this, and I have a letter from the twenty-second stating that regarding the site plan review, site plan dated June twenty twenty. Uh, the disturbed area. Four thousand square feet. A SWIP is not required. Sanitary sewer available, Park Edge Drive.
Oh, Chris.
Stormwater sewer is available on.
Chris, can you hold on, apologize for interrupting, but there's a lot of background noise, I think on your end that's interrupting. At least on my end, I can't hear you very well.
Uh, let me see if I could turn this fan off, because I don't have a speaker on, if you wait one second.
It could be car noise.
How's that?
Better.
Uh, we've got a state of the art HVAC system in this building, so it's quite loud sometimes. Uh, so regarding the plan dated June twenty twenty. Engineering Department states that the disturbed area, since it is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet and less than an acre, a SWIP, a full SWIP is not required. There's a sanitary sewer and stormwater sewer available on Park Edge Drive. A curb cut permit is required for the proposed driveway entrance. Driveway entrance proposed is sixty-five linear feet, or a variance will be required. And that's something that you could, you know, you could approve along with site plan approval, because the planning board does grant the variances. Regarding the street opening permits required. A permit will be, a street opening permit will be required for the sanitary lateral, stormwater pipe, gas service, water service and electric service. Direct tap to existing catch basin from open swell is not allowed. Construct new catch basin at proposed inlet location. And the new catch basin should include a three, um, a three-foot sump pump in a hood. Oh, sorry, a three-inch sump in a bottom, a hood on a twelve-inch outlet pipe. So I will send this to you, Julian. I, I just got this, this morning.
Okay.
Sent you the PDF of their comments.
What was that part about the driveway variance?
Uh, it's stating that since the driveway proposed is sixty-five linear feet. And I believe that, if you, if you look at this, the apron to the driveway is sixty-five linear feet. If it's above forty feet in width, a variance is required.
Okay.
And, and that's just something that we, that Kate, correct me if I'm wrong. The board can approve with the site, with the site plan if they feel, um, if they feel that it should be approved.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions from any board members?
Ken.
Oh, I'll, I'll also add that two thirty-nine review has commenced with Oneida County. Because of its location, it's, it's within five hundred feet of Herkimer Road. So coordinated review was necessary with the county. But this is a type of action, and there's no further coordinator review necessary. So if you're to make any approvals, make it contingent upon favorable two thirty-nine review.
Right.
You could just grant preliminary site plan approval, grant final site plan approval when two thirty-nine M comes through.
Yeah, I like that.
Cause you never know what the county's gonna say, if they say anything.
All right, does anybody care to make a motion?
Uh, Fred, I'll make a motion to grant, as Kate recommended, preliminary site approval. Pending, pending completion of the two thirty-nine review by the county and any feedback they may have.
Okay, I think we also should add that they would also have to adhere to any points in the engineering document that Chris, Chris read to us.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay. Give, give, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, George, I mean, not George, Joe and Joe, are you out there somewhere?
Yeah.
Hey, are you a yea or a nay? Okay, you're in, okay.
We're having trouble hearing Joe Priari, we're having a trouble hearing Joe.
Well, he just turned his speaker on. He just said yes, he's in.
Okay.
So that would be unanimous, so, uh, I guess that it passes.
Okay, or Fred, do we separately discuss the driveway variance that's needed? Or is, or is that be wrapped up into the preliminary site approval?
Uh, why don't we make it separate?
Yeah, I think that'd be good to make it separate, just to prove an area variance for the curb cut.
Okay.
The curb to sixty-five as opposed to forty? No? Okay, then I make a motion that we accept the, uh, accept the variance, I guess, and allow them to cut the curb to sixty-five feet. Anybody second that?
I'll second that, Fred.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, I guess that carries. So you got both things there.
Thank you.
All right, any else, Chris?
No, that's all, Julian, I'll be in touch with you, and I will get you the PDF of the engineering comments.
Okay.
If you have any further questions when you review that, please let me know. And I'll loop Gene Santa Croce into this as well, as he's the one that reviewed this.
All right.
I will let you know as soon as we hear back from the, the county for two thirty-nine.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Senator, I believe our next, I believe our next meeting is on the fifteenth, so it's coming up.
Right. Very, very good.
Hey, Chris, hey, Chris, are we gonna be doing it this way for the foreseeable future? Do you, do you have any, any idea when we might be live again?
Unfortunately, I believe we will be doing this for the foreseeable future. I don't know when we'll be allowing anyone in, uh, back into City Hall.
Okay.
I asked for, he left today, and he was pretty unsure. So it's likely that we'll continue this for at least the next couple of months.
Okay.
Very good.
Any other?
I just, I, I wanted to know if we could all stay on for a minute to talk about something that related to this case.
Who was asking?
Joe Priari.
Oh, sure, Joe, how can, how can we help?
All right, I'll sign off, and thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Julian.
Bye. Thanks.
As you guys, as you're all aware, I spent thirteen years as a chairperson on the zoning board. And I also own the house that I grew up in on Hammond Ave. And I don't know how this occurred, but on the corner, a gentleman purchased the house. And it appears, I, I can't say for certain, that he did his own, and I know it's probably not related here, but the planning board. He did his own curb cut on Hammond Ave, poured all concrete between, poured a new apron and a driveway in the front of his house when he has a full two-stall garage and a driveway on, on Arthur Street. And I was just wondering how this, did he do it on his own, or did it?
You know, I think, I think that that is something you should bring to Dan Coza, because it might be a codes violation. And.
I believe action is being taken, Joe.
Okay, yeah, Fred, I think, I think I did hear some, and I mean, I'm looking, I'm all for people needing certain things, but I, I think it just looks horrendous, and first of all, he did a curb cut and it's radish. I mean, I think it's directly across the street from your old homestead there, right, Fred?
Well, I was, I was one of the complainers, I called Chris, who in turn, right, Chris, you wanna get in on this?
Yeah, we, we received a number of complaints at the same time when that happened. They did not get approval from the codes department, they did not get approval for a curb cut. They did, they, they did complete the job without approval. So codes did step in, and they told them that it would, that you're not allowed to park on the front lawn, that you had to go before the zoning board in order to, you know, to, to appeal it. But the fact that they spent time and money to do that and didn't, it doesn't matter, they didn't get permission. Now, one thing I will say is that while it is unsightly, the cement is unsightly, you know, and the, and the lighting, you know, I feel. There is nothing against them paving or pouring concrete in their yard, you just can't park on it, which.
Really? I'm shocked by that, Chris.
Yeah, the, the main thing here is the curb cut. The curb cut and the fact that they're parking on it. But yeah, you can, you can, there's nothing to stop you from putting cement in the front of your house, there's just no parking.
I, yeah, and I would point out that there are normally four extended cab trucks parked on that property, two in the front, two on the side, plus two other cars, so I'm not sure who's living there, but I don't think.
It looks like, it looks like an apartment house.
It, it does, they're, they're certainly aware.
It's a residential neighborhood, it shouldn't be allowed.
Guys, I'm sorry, I have to sign off, but please don't hesitate to call me in the office if you have any questions about this, okay?
Okay, I just, I just, I know that it came up before, and I haven't been with all of you since then, and I, I just, you know, and I'm all for, you know, hey, look, somebody needs something, you try to, within the criteria, but this is just, I mean, there's.
Ridiculous.
If his driveway on Arthur Street isn't enough, then that house isn't enough, that corner's not enough. I would have to, to also say that, I would also think that it's, it's a hazard on the corner. With driveways going across from each other and around the corner. And I, I just think that people have, there has to be something done where people, I mean, he did a curb cut. I mean, it's not just he poured concrete, Chris, he cut the curb away, you know, I mean, that's just.
Is the fact that he performed an illegal curb cut and is proceeding to park there. Uh, I think one of the number, the, the, the first people to complain about this was actually the mayor. You know, it's, it's right down the street from him, he said, what the, what, what the hell's happened? You know, and we proceeded flooded by calls and emails by, you know, residents, neighbors, you know, friends and staff. Gene Santa Croce is in codes, he's right, you know, the next street over, and he said, what is going on with this? So I believe, um, I saw that Patty was in receipt of an application for the, for this, you know, for a variance or what have you from the zoning board. Uh, she is doubtful that that will pass.
Okay.
Chris.
It should not pass.
Chris, if that doesn't pass, and it luckily won't, um, then is he obligated, or should we make him obligated to put that damn curb back in or pay for the curb?
He has to, he has to, I mean, he has to.
Yeah, Marima can bring him to court to make him do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't speak on behalf of them, but yes, I would imagine that that's an action that they would take. Um, at the very, very least, they can do that.
Chris, the, the concrete that's between the sidewalk and the street, I mean, that's the city property, isn't it?
It's easement, they have easement to it, I, I wouldn't see where they would be able to just go ahead and pour.
Right away, I don't know that they can take your concrete there. I'm honestly not too sure, but I would be, I would be surprised if you were allowed to just pour concrete there.
Yeah. I mean, if he's gonna do anything, like you said, if supposedly he can by code leave the concrete that's around the house, he definitely shouldn't be allowed to leave it. Uh, the curb should be put back, and definitely the grass should be put back between the sidewalk and the street, so it doesn't look like a, you know, a driveway of any sort, cause knowing him, he put the curb back and he jumped.
I would truly agree with you, and Joe, yeah, I, I share your same, you know, you know, thought. That's gotta be some sort of hazard as you're driving down the street, and those cars are parked there, because if you were to erect a fence in your front yard, there's a reason that your fence can be no, no higher than four feet. And if you're going to have it higher, you need to get, um, you know, you need to get approval. And there's even the sight line that if you construct a fence on a corner lot, you have to have it thirty feet back the corner. You know, in order to provide that sight line for drivers. So, so I, I, I'm, I'm confident in the board, uh, you know, it's, that's, that's not right. And I'm sure that they've gotten enough, um, you know, feedback personally from a number of people that they know. It's just, it's just a shame that they went ahead and did that without, you know, any regard for neighbors, the law.
Well, how long is this gonna take to, to get some action out of that stuff?
I'm not sure of how long the process takes, I know that it was, what, last month? Or even the month before that this was brought to my attention.
Been two months he's been parking there.
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm not at all sure how the codes process goes. I know that, uh, you know, we had, you know, another commonly cited issue is in front of LaConti, they've got the trailer on Albany Street. You know, I don't know if you've seen it, if you've driven up lately, but right at the point there in his park, there's a huge trailer. And you could not see up Albany Street if you're driving down, um, uh, if you're coming down, what is it, Mary or?
Folks, I have to sign off, but please feel free to call me about this, and if I have any more information to give you, I certainly will, okay?
All right, Kate, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everyone, take care.
Bye-bye.
Well, I just think, the funny thing is, I've seen a lot of people in thirteen years come before the zoning board, and some of which, you know, even that Dan Davis gentleman, and, you know, he fell into some, uh, you know, unfortunate circumstances where, where they took his building the first time, but, you know, he was one of those, I call him, it, it didn't bias me in my decision and new things, but he was one of those, oh, yeah, I'll do this, I'll do that, I'll do that. You know, and you make that, that condition, um, and never does it, you know, time after time. And this gentleman here, I do believe owns the old gasoline station that's a car lot on, uh, Carlo, on the corner of Albany and Glendina, maybe? And I know that he tried to tear down more houses, and that was where the auto overlay was, and I think that he went ahead and did it anyhow, we, we rejected it, so, you know, we all see, I see it day and the, the houses in Unica, our housing market's great, you can't even, the people are putting their houses up, and people are overbidding on them. They don't even live for a day. We really need to start cracking down on this stuff, because, you know, we wanna be friendly, you know, I guess resident friendly, but this is way above, and he is also doing detailing out of his garage at, at the house, so.
Well, I mean, that's the stuff itself, I mean, that's, that, now, I'm gonna also say this, is that, you know, if you're, if you do not receive a letter, you know, cause you're within, you're not within two hundred feet of this property, I believe that you can still weigh in on this, you can still, you know, submit an email to Patty DeCarre, you know, stating, you know, your feelings of this, um, you know, that they can take into account, because, you know, not everybody shows up. Or actually, you can actually, I can let you know if that's on the case, and you can come to them on WebEx if you, if you'd like to.
I will, I will, because that, I did when they wanted to open up another car wash on Moak Street again, where, you know, we, we, as a zoning board years ago, said it just wasn't gonna work, I mean, we'd love to have something on that property, but, and it was a self-created hardship, you can't say, he didn't know, because the second buyer knew that the first buyer couldn't put it there, so, I just.
You can't say that the only thing that you would make a profit there is a car wash.
No, no, actually, actually, right now. You could probably put houses there, and they'll sell like that.
So I have two, I have two, two question, uh, two, two points. Joe, Joe and Fred, what the hell, it sounds like the wild, wild west on your end of town, what the hell's going on over there?
I could not believe that he wasn't stopped, what was going on, I mean.
I've, I've gone, Joe, I've gone by and taken pictures and can also complain, I mean, I can't believe, and not to mention the, the lights, it's lit up like it's, you know, Close Encounters.
No, it's, it's, the mayor had.
Shut it down, man, shut it down, that's the only you can do to send the message, shut it down.
He should have been stopped before he completed.
Well, I, that's, I believe that to be true, I mean, I know a lot of the neighbors that have, when I grew up there, they're still there, and they said, you know, they would, they were complaining right from when he was doing it, and saying, is that, can he do that?
So. That's what I don't quite understand about, about the codes thing.
Exactly.
If, if a complaint came in while it was under construction.
Why didn't it hit immediately?
Didn't get a cease and desist order immediately. He didn't get a cease and desist order immediately.
That's correct, that's exactly right.
That myself, I don't know, I don't know how that works over there, I don't know who got the complaint, or what the, you know, what the protocol is there, but-
What's the owner's name?
I, I share this frustration there, because I've cited things myself in the past.
Well, look, if the guy has a problem, you know what, let codes take the responsibility of, of groveling and apologizing, but he should be shut down, period.
Joe, what's his name, Joe?
I don't know what happens there, I don't know how they're set up, I don't know who is responsible for doing what, uh, who took the complaint, who gave the, uh, you know, which officer or which official? I, I don't know, but yeah, I agree with you guys completely.
It's ridiculous.
Because, uh, that, it's quite the eye, still a beautiful neighborhood.
Chris, Fred's been asking, what's the name of the people?
Uh, the name, I can look that up for you, hold on there. Just give me a second.
It's funny, because I, I'm gonna tell you a quick story, I was gonna build a garage at my, my house, I finally ended up doing it. But I was on the zoning board, and I called Goran, at the time Goran was the head of code. I needed a building permit, I had a couple guys that were not gonna be working that week, because we had to wait for something. I wanted them to build my garage. He said, go ahead, I'll give you, it was, he wasn't working, because it was the day of the election, or it was the day before, he said, look, you're okay, come in on Wednesday, we'll fill it out. You realize that I got a stop work order and had to go to court? I had to go to court, I, you know how many people came before me that did the work? You know, and, and I beautified not only my house, the house next door, and I had to go to court. Then it was, honest to God, I had to go to court.
I'm telling you, it's the wild, wild west on your end of town, what, move to South Utica.
I don't know, I don't know, so-
Ever since Joe, Joe Caruso moved back, things have changed.
Things have changed.
Yeah, um, it's showing up as, uh, two owners. So I see Constance Andia and Asim Huskic.
Ahah. The Russians.
The Russians.
Are you kidding me, you think that Asim would cut down trees and pave the front of a house? Crazy. Um, yes, that's, that's who appears to own it right now, but I can assure you that this, uh, has been the topic of conversation at City Hall, uh, more so than any other, uh, complaint that's come up in recent history.
Well, it is kind of a gross injustice, really.
Oh, bad, bad. I'm talking to you, he doesn't go to court, but I went to court, I had to go to court. I can't catch a break, I said, you know, whatever.
Joe, Joe, they have it in for the Italians. That's the whole deal.
That's funny.
I got a stop work order.
Hey, uh, Chris, I have a question that's unrelated to this, but you, you were talking about this, this entire, um, issue, it occurred to me. So if a, if a, if a four fence, if a four-foot fence is required from a corner 30 feet back, if you wanna put a fence up, what if it's a, a, a green hedge, hedgerow, you know, of, of shrubs, let's say, that have grown to be eight feet or more, is that allowed?
I'm not too sure, um, I, I, up top of my head. Um, all I know is that if you're going to build a fence, you know, it has to be four feet. I could look into landscaping to see if there's anything, um, you know, that changes when it turns to natural, but I, I don't-
I very much appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, listen, if we met in my office, I got some wine, 14-year-old Glen Laver, I don't know, space here, gentlemen.
I'm in, I'm in.
I've, I've gotta go, uh, if you have any other questions, please, uh, email me or call me, and, uh, you guys-
Well, hey, well, before you go, Chris, we have, we should probably formally adjourn.
That's true. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, the meeting isn't, all right, meeting is adjourned.
Gentlemen, take care.
All right, guys, thank you, bye-bye.